This is the time of the meeting when a member of the public can address the board for up to three minutes. Is there anybody who wishes to address the board this evening? Superintendent Grayden?
All right, just a couple of quick notes. One, I'd like to thank and give a shout out to the Young Adult Program for the students and the staff that were involved in the Young Adult Talent Show that occurred last Friday night in conjunction with the craft. They did an outstanding job. The experts were outstanding. I'd like to again thank them for a great performance. And then the next thing is Bittergie. We are, as some of you on the board are aware, we are auctioning off some of the internal contents at Houghton School. And that process is underway. They've been catalogued and inventoried and uploaded to the site. Tomorrow we'll be communicating out to the local community about the opportunity to bid on those items. Next week will be kind of the timeline of a viewing date, a bidding date, and a pickup date that all occurs. So we're hoping to get a lot of that stuff out there and sold for some of that residual value by the time we break for the holidays.
Did we go through the whole district and put other stuff over there?
Some of that stuff. We moved several things in now. Some of it did move out, but we tried to limit that. Pouring. Yes, we should transfer stuff that we know we don't want over there as well. That's all I have.
That's it? Okay. Any comments from board members? Go Green.
Yes.
Rob White, have anything for us this evening?
Actually, I'd like to give like a, I guess, shout out for the, you know, boys' basketball team and boys' hockey team who are both playing tonight, so good luck to them.
Thank you.
I just had a brief discussion with a parent who has a freshman, and he says that his son is happy as a clam as a new freshman, so hopefully that story will continue for all the past four years.
This is our last meeting of the year. Want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, all that. And want to thank my colleagues on the board for their support during the past year. I think we've accomplished a lot during this year. We've done it the right way. We've had good discussion. We've respected opinion, and hopefully they'll continue into the future. In January, we'll pick new officers, and that will move forward from there. With that, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed. Diane, would the chief place a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Scheduled reports, we have the Athletic Review Committee this evening. Assistant Superintendent Ellis?
Thank you. This past fall Superintendent Grayden tasked me with the process of reviewing Board of Education Policies eighty-four ninety and eighty-five hundred, as well as accounting and cash handling procedures associated with interscholastic athletics. And finally, the third component was the structure of participation fees and access to sports for interscholastic athletic departments. And so, in terms of process, we convened a committee. There are three members of the committee here tonight besides myself. Parent Shannon Needham, who's back there with her husband Bill. Shannon and Bill have had children in baseball, lacrosse, football, and soccer, so they've had children in both the participant-funded or club sports, as well as the district-funded sports that we've had in the past. Craig Heft was there. And then Alicia Seeger and Rob White, I know is here tonight as well. Alicia's supposed to be here in a little bit. So those folks are able to be with here tonight. But in addition to those people, we had a crew of about eleven people. I presented the names of those people, as well as the sports that they were representing in the executive summary I submitted to Superintendent Grayden. Our committee met three separate times, and during those three meetings, we discussed a number of different issues as they relate to these policies. And I'll provide kind of an overview of some of the findings, and then be happy to entertain any questions that you may have. I'll start with the accounting piece and the cash handling. We had Assistant Superintendent Warner attend the second session, and she reviewed the cash handling policies and procedures that the business office has created. And I was very pleased to report that that wasn't new news to anybody in the room. As a matter of fact, there was, I think, tremendous familiarity with those expectations and in both parties, both the district and the parents that were there, as well as the coaches, I think, felt that there was a solid understanding of what needed to be done to be fiscally responsible in that realm. As an offshoot to that, the discussion really kind of meandered down the road of identifying the fact that there really is no such thing as a district-funded activity and club sports. We identified that the district subsidizes activities, but that there's no sport in our current sport offerings that is completely immune from fundraising, that is completely immune from parental support or outside entities. So you'll see the ramifications of that discussion a little bit later in board policy. But that was somewhat eye-opening, I think, to some of the people on the committee, because there has been, I think, a perception over time that the district really has and dedicates a lot of resources to our varsity sports, and on the same token, doesn't provide many to the club sports. To help educate parents in all of our sports, one of the things that our committee is recommending, and our copy of this was placed in your packet, is kind of a budget overview, that it is our intention would be used on an annual basis for all of our sports, whether they be district-subsidized or self-funded or privately-funded sports, so that the parents in those activities had understanding and knowledge of exactly where the revenue came from and what it's being spent on. We included, for the sake of those sports that are going to be district-subsidized, we included a column that identifies the funding that comes from the district, as well as funding that is privately raised, so that people have a good understanding of just how that equation looks. And again, it is our intention and our recommendation that that form be used annually for all of the sports, whether they be district-subsidized or privately-funded sports. In addition to presenting those to the parents, it would be the expectation that they turn a copy into the athletic director, so that there's a record on file for the district to review as well. One of the other key components that we do have some sports crew, Rowing being the notable one, that do carry monies over on an annual basis for capital projects. And so we made a notation on that form to allow for that designation as well. So again, we're presenting four recommendations here this evening, an annual budget overview form that we would encourage the board to take a look at, give feedback to, and ultimately provide some direction to as well, as far as use going forward. The second area, and it became really an offshoot of that first conversation about the identification of funding, there was a lot of discussion, probably a session and a half, about the confusion that the terminology that we use causes. The concept that we had a varsity sport is somewhat of a misnomer, because the varsity sport designation really meant that the district was providing financial subsidies. Varsity sports typically have freshmen, JV, and even middle school levels to it, so by name and by nature, they're not all varsity sports, per se. By the same token, those club sports, that conveyed an entirely different message than what the district hoped it would. At no point is there any intention whatsoever of conveying the messages that our club sports are somehow second-class or second-rate to those sports that have been termed as varsity sports. And so as you go through the board policies, what you'll see is a consistent theme, is that we are recommending that the term "varsity sport" be replaced with "district subsidized", and that the term "club" be replaced with "privately funded." We think that those two terms provide a much more clear and transparent descriptor of exactly how those sports function than the current terms do. We had a lot of discussion about some of the nuts and bolts in terms of the process involved in the evolution from a club to a varsity sport. When the policy committee met and discussed this a while ago, the policy as it reads is somewhat incongruent with practice, because that policy indicates a progression that would lead to what we would hope to be termed "district subsidized." We decided at this point not to recommend significant changes to that, but to recommend that we do follow that annual review process, so that we know exactly where we are with these sports. And so the significant changes that we're recommending to the board policies are terminology changes relative to the self-funded becoming or privately-funded sports, replacing "club" and the term "district subsidized," replacing "varsity." The last piece, and we spent time in each of our three sessions addressing the participation fees and access or equity concepts. And one of the things that one of our committee members noted is that any inequities that we have are not limited to just the activity fees or the participant fees. The mere fact that we have sports we subsidize and sports that we don't is an inequity in and of itself. And all of our sports are a little bit different. There was a lot of education that went on and a lot of deeper understanding that took place as a result of this. And we talked about different options in terms of how we could try to eliminate that perception that there was somehow a disadvantage to the participant-funded or privately-funded sports relative to that participation in the second sport and whatnot. And despite a whole lot of discussion and a lot of different options being discussed, didn't feel like we had a better option than the current situation that exists. And so right now, we're not recommending a change to that, either to the fee structure or to the fee itself. But we are recommending, and Mr. White has actually already started this process, a revision of the budget overview that exists on the athletic department website, as well as scheduled times that we will review this process and the budget overview for the athletic department with parents. Typically, we would talk about three times a year, fall, winter, and spring, so that there's a bit of an understanding there. So kind of in summary, again, we're recommending terminology changes to the board policy relative to what we call those different kinds of sports. We're recommending an annual athletic budget overview for use by all of our sports. And at this time, we're not recommending any changes to the participation fees, but we are certainly recommending and acknowledging the fact that there needs to be regular and periodic review of that. So at this point, that's a hundred mile an hour overview of four and a half, four and a half hours of meetings or so. But I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'm sure Mr. White and Mrs. Needham as well. She's laughing at me.
Any questions from board members?
Yes, sir. I would like to thank those that were on the committee. Time's very important for everybody, and getting everybody together in three evenings was difficult, because we had coaches and they had things to do. And thank Mr. Ellis, because as you can tell by his report, he dove into this pretty good and he had a good handle on it. Thanks to everybody.
I got a quick question. What's the amount of money that goes from the general fund to athletics on an annual basis?
Rob would probably be better answered. It's typically eight hundred-ish?
No, it's less than that. It's around six hundred thousand.
Between six and six fifty.
Yeah.
Does that include all administrative expenses? Like Rob's salaries, support staffs?
Yeah, yeah.
So six hundred fifty K?
It's the general fund transfer to the athletic.
Now technically, the athletic fund is in the general fund now.
Now it is, yeah.
But we still consider it a transfer. You know, a few years ago, the accounting standards changed and I got.
Okay. And then, do we have a handle on what we raise in terms of pay-to-participate fees? And then what that collective fundraising dollar amount is? I'm trying to get at, what's our total cost?
Yes, yes to the first, not so much to the second. And as part of that general budget overview that we want to provide, because, you know, our current model, I think, and this is one of the things that we've had some loose discussion of, and I think bears further discussion. I think our current model, in some respects, creates a competition between activities within the community for the same dollar. I know I've used this example with the board before, so pardon my repetitiveness, but, you know, there are certain times of the year where the parade at the front door for buying of cards and pizza kits and whatnot comes. And so there's competition for the same dollar that exists in the community. So that competition, I think, breeds, I don't want to say secrecy, but I don't think that it's very transparent right now in terms of how much fundraising is being done. Not that there's not transparency from sport or within the sports, but in terms of us having a great handle of that, I don't know that that exists today, and that's part of the objective of this overview. In terms of the participation fee revenue, a hundred and forty-four-ish?
No, last year it was three hundred and fifty-three thousand.
And then gate revenue was about a hundred and fifteen thousand?
Yep.
A hundred and one last year.
Okay.
And if you recall from our report last year, that transfer from general fund has remained relatively static over ten years because of the pay-to-participate changes.
Right, right. Yeah, I guess I'm looking at it in a couple of different ways. One is from the parent view, you know, the pay to participate, and those who have had sons and daughters in sports know that that's the initial gateway.
Right.
And then there's fundraising expectations beyond that.
Right.
So I'm trying to get a feel for, you know, what that ultimate parental cost is. And I think we'll get at that as we get those other numbers. I would like to suggest a couple of things this evening. The first is, and I've talked to Superintendent Grayden about it, is that in line with goal number five, our financial goal, is that I would like you and Rob and Coach Polka to look at what would it take to eliminate the general budget transfer to athletics over a five-year period? And what would that look like? Do we have to establish a different type of fundraising apparatus? Do we have to, you know, put more burden on parents? You know, do we have to look at a sports authority? And that may be a radical idea today, but the radical idea of today could be the mainstream idea five years from now. So I want you to look at it with a clean sheet of paper, with wide eyes open, and say, what could we do as a district to make athletics totally self-supporting? And that's a big task. I don't expect, you know, in fourteen, we'd get there. It may take some time. We may have to set something up, or we get an endowment put together that helps offset that, but take a look at that. Secondly, I like the idea of a budget overview, but I think we'll have further discussion as a board in terms of, do we want a third-party audit? Not over everything, but maybe on a random level. You know, maybe we pick four to six sports a year, and when we have Plant Moran come in, Plant Moran would do that scrubbing for us. That would give us an additional level of transparency, which I think would be good.
If you can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that the way that the accounts are set up today, those funds are just as likely to be randomly selected for audit as, say, the Spanish club would be.
The transaction, checks being written out would be, yes.
I think there's a level of that today.
Okay, and we'll take a look at that. That may meet our criteria. And if it does, that's great. You know, we don't need to spend money on outside people coming in if we don't have to.
Just one background for some of us aboard, you may not be aware of this. In two thousand and four, Paul knows this, because he was with me, with the Language Planning asked the administration to try to have athletics self-funded by two thousand and fourteen. That was an ask that we laid out at the time. Said that, you know, like between revenue, generation of advertisement, sponsorships, prepare to participate, and other things of that nature, we'd like to see if we could be self-funded by two thousand and fourteen. So while I respect the need that we need to do this cautiously, to take five years to implement what was discussed ten years ago, seems like a avoidance of the issue. If we have three hundred and fifty thousand coming from pay to participate today, and six hundred and fifty thousand from the athletic general fund transfer, I would like us to look at what it costs for pay to participate if we eliminated the general fund transfer next year. Not saying we should do it, but I'd like us to look at it and understand what it is. If there are results in having to reduce the amount of coaches we have, or stretch out the equipment purchases, whatever it might be, that's a conversation we should have, but I think it's important for us to have that conversation. We have asked our staff to take significant cuts. We've asked parents to incur significant expenses. And, you know, we haven't gone after this in ten years. We've danced around it, and I think if we just got a sense of it, and say, it's going to cost three thousand bucks to play football. Okay, deal breaker, we have a problem here. But I think we should, you know, I would encourage that we get that number now, so we understand what it is, and maybe back comp. But I'd like to start with the position that we go into next year's budget process with a frame of reference that there be no transfer of funds from the general fund for athletics. Back off that position if we have the ability to do so. But the reality is, we're not five percent of fund balance today. We are not at our requirement as a district of five percent. Last meeting, we saw the numbers from Janice, and says we're going to be lower than that next year and going forward. So by the time we get done moving implementation of the five-year schedule for athletics, we're going to be seven million dollars in debt, according to our own plans from two weeks ago. We're chasing bad money. I would encourage us to get in front of it now. And it may not be practical. May be practical, may have a huge revolt from parents and from administration involved with it, but I think it's something we should look at. You know, these are, you know, we have made some serious decisions in the last couple of years, and I encourage us as a board to look at that. Not saying we shouldn't do it next year, but encourage us as a board to at least understand.
Well, I appreciate the comments of Trustee Zimmer. And then I think what we want to avoid is, we want to avoid that shock factor. And there may be some things that need to be put in place that may take two, three years before it kicks in to where we can make that transition and make it smoothly. And then I don't think we want to do a knee-jerk on it and then find out, we got to cut freshman sports, or we got to cut this, or cut that. I think we can take a measured approach to it. But on the other hand, I do understand the sense of urgency that you laid out there.
It's just a matter of, if we don't start it now, we won't do it.
Yep.
We discussed it. I had the conversation in two thousand and four. This is the one in two thousand and fourteen. Members of the Language Planning had the conversation at that time. So, and the money is going to continue to get worse than it is today.
So I'll ask the question, is it feasible to bring something to us at the January work session, which would be our second meeting in January?
Yep.
I mean, if you need more time, you know, we would understand that, because we're asking you to do something big here.
That's okay. There's no way it should be recorded as a recommendation we do. This is intended for a study group, to understand the consequences, understand the ramifications. We did the same body of work when it came to the contracts, the same body of work, whether looking at all our expenses. And I encourage us to do that necessarily. That's all I'm saying.
So we're adding to what the committee reported? Is that what we're doing?
Well, this is really a whole new, this is a whole new thing beyond the committee. I think what the committee came up with is good. A lot of those recommendations are very practical, and we can move forward with that. But I think we're looking long range here to say, if we've got six hundred to six hundred and fifty thousand dollars being transferred from the general budget to athletics, and let's face it, we're about choices here. We have to make choices. We have a limited amount of resources at our disposal. And it may come a point in time when we say, okay, is that money better utilized on a priority basis elsewhere? You know, we're talking about teacher training for next-generation classrooms. We're looking at things like that. That's going to cost money. And unfortunately, we don't have a tree that we can go shake and get some ore. We have to look within our means and say, how do we prioritize? And I think this is an area that we need to put under the microscope and take a good hard look at it. Because I do think the community supports our athletic programs. I support our athletic programs. But we have to look and say, is there a different way that we can do this that would free up funds to place to another priority?
Janice, do you have an idea what was the average balances in the privately-funded club accounts?
It really varies across the board. I think if you remember, when we dove into this last year, I mean, crew is going to have a lot more basketball.
And I have family that own capital projects, but I mean, I know.
I really don't.
It'll lock the end of the year, I guess, fairly well, and we have some long-range plans, but I'm just wondering, we as a club don't exactly go back and say, well, I think we're overfunded now, and I'm just.
Yeah, that's why that form is going to come into play.
It's going to be there.
Okay, all right.
And this is where you start looking at it from a United Way perspective for nonprofits, have a certain expected dollar value for overhead expense, and, you know, a certain percentage for each program, and there's ways of running it in a nonprofit manner if you choose that direction. Not saying we should go there. I'm just saying that there's ways, there's models out there we could refer to that would give us guidance on how to do that, what the fund balance should be for each club and activity for their own respective activities. There's things of that we can do up to.
I just wish we'd have known a little more of what you were looking for, because we could have done that with that committee.
Well, and I think there are two different, there are really two different subjects. And I think we didn't want to overload the committee and lose the focus of that. I think the work that was done by the committee was excellent work, and will definitely come with some policy changes as a result of that. I think now we're looking at a whole different spectrum of saying, okay, how do we take an athletic budget and take it right off our books and make every sport a self-funded sport? And that's not an easy thing to do. I'm not, you know, it's not something we're going to do tomorrow. It's a long-term venture, just like our strategic framework. That's a long-term venture that we're involved in. I mean, we've heard some of the numbers of just some of our athletic infrastructure that's going to need to be replaced over the next several years. I mean, I think we have to take that into account as well.
I think every member of this board appreciates athletics. I think everybody on board participated in athletics. Their children participate in athletics. Just before the meeting, I was talking with Coach Polka about the intrinsic value that comes from working with young people from an adult perspective, to understand role models, see how it's handled. The coaching staff, in the two years of Polka being here, has done remarkable work for young people. I've never seen them lose their temper. I've never seen them be disrespectful, and the team responded to it. There's a tremendous amount of learning that happens on the field in all of our sports between the young people and the coaches, understanding how to succeed, how to fail, how to deal with adversity. Those are all part of life experiences. I'm not saying that they shouldn't be incorporated, but reality is, we have to focus on our understanding priorities, and this is just a what-if story.
Any other comments from board members? I think we're making some assumptions, and I understand the fiscal line that we're walking, but there are many things that go into an education. It's not just books. It's not just athletics. It's not just music. All of these things are necessary to prepare a child for life in the big world. I applaud our desire, and I encourage our desire, to gather the numbers to be able to say that this would be one thing that has a particular value, so that we could weigh it against other values. Gee, we need a roof. We could take a section of this that we have learned about and say, yes, we can build a roof using that money. But I would hate to see the research that we do get misappropriated or misunderstood as, gee, we're throwing athletics out the window. And all of a sudden, we're going to a European model of high school is for books, and if you want to play sports, you're going, and you're going to have to join a club, and if you want to do music, you've got to go to a music conservatory, and it's all, you know, unfortunately, over in Europe, it's all paid for by the state, but here, it's all paid for by the parents.
I think referee Holden would have a problem with that, too.
You know, so I have no desire. I have no desire for this board to be telegraphing something that this board has no desire to do, so we need to make that very clear. And Secretary Carter, your points are well taken, and I think... And I think in a lot of ways, we're, we're in the preservation game somewhat.
Yes, and I understand.
We haven't had to cut freshman sports. We haven't had to cut middle school sports.
But we need this information.
We've been able, we've been able to keep everything that we've had up to this point. And we want to continue to keep that.
Yes.
And that the question is, is there a different path from a funding standpoint to accomplish that?
Yes.
And that's, that's a big task, you know, and I'm not sure we can do it.
Get the information.
We're not gonna do it next year, but we've gotta start somewhere. We gotta, you gotta, you know, get knee-deep in it, as they say.
We need this information, but I just don't want it to be misunderstood by someone else going, oh, look, they're researching cutting athletics.
Right.
No, we are not researching cutting athletics.
No.
We're researching, how much does it cost to run an athletic program? And I'm sure at some point, we're gonna research, how much does it cost to run a high school? How much does it cost to run an elementary school? Those things, I think we've got a little more handle on, so we don't need to go quite as deep into the research. But we need all of this information to make these fiscal decisions, so.
Did you have that kind?
No, I'd like to applaud, thank the efforts of the committee that came together. And then I look forward to the January session.
I thought you do.
Okay, good. There's no more comments, we wrap up. Thanks, Kurt, thanks to those who participated. There was great work that was done, and certainly at the policy level, we'll begin making those changes and implementing them. We have four action items this evening. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the two thousand and fourteen Board of Education meeting dates as submitted by Superintendent Gray. So, who?
Paul.
And Todd. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Real quick on that.
I'm sorry.
I love how you're doing it.
I didn't think we needed a discussion.
Just real quick, just so people are aware, the April meeting, yeah, the April meeting, we would have typically historically fallen during spring break, because of the way spring break falls this year. And so, we will be meeting after. So, we will have, in April, we will meet on the fifteenth and the twenty-second. That's all I wanted, just making over that.
Alright. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the board's stipends for two thousand and thirteen as submitted by Superintendent Gray. Do we have a motion? Karen, support, and the chief.
Do you want to make any comments?
No comments, and I went.
We didn't get a raise.
No, no, you did not.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the high school new courses adoption as submitted by Assistant Superintendent Latch. So, who?
Paul.
And Karen. Discussion?
So, in your board packet you have a handout that speaks to the new courses. However, there was one we left off, so I did make another copy that you have in front of you. And let's go through and review the courses, so everybody understands what we're proposing here. So, the first one here is post-secondary planning. In essence, this is an extension of helping some of our special education students that are transitioning to college be able to have those skills to be successful. I think that's an area that's difficult for our students. It's not only about getting to college, it's how to be successful once you get there. So, that's what that, that course is offering. You'll also see the column of the costs. There's gonna be some expenses for some of the classes that we're proposing here. Sort of the cost of doing business with having such a comprehensive high school. We do talk a lot about our teachers leading curriculum and instruction, and sort of their evolution is based on new courses that meet our students' needs, but also interest level for our teaching staff as well. If you look at the next two classes, we'll kind of lump those together. There's a critical mass now, especially in Spanish, where we have so many students going through the language program to get the language credit, that the World Language Department looked at this and said, well, how are we gonna help students who maybe want an experience in Spanish that's maybe not as rigorous? And how do we help those that want one that is more rigorous? And that's sort of the evolution of Spanish to a, to the culture, and then also the honors, so that we can meet all of those needs, because that was a big issue, still is. And how do you offer breadth of curriculum within Spanish with so many, with such critical mass of students? So, that's what the proposal is there. These first three courses, there's no cost, they already have the materials necessary to do those. If we move on to the next one, this is a Bible as literature in the Western world class. And I know sometimes that might raise eyebrows as to, whoa, is that crossing the line with religion? Actually, it's not. We already teach world religion in the middle school as part of our social studies unit, but in the context of history of how religion has really impacted history and culture. And there's also a world religion class at the high school already. This is based on an interest level of a lot of students wanting to potentially look at this. And again, courses are based on enrollment, that when we propose new courses, they don't always run. But they're being approved by this board to say, yeah, go ahead and put that in the course catalog with, and we will see what kind of enrollment, what the interest level is. So, that's that one there, fifteen hundred dollars cost for...
On that one?
Oh, yeah.
Can we also look at potentially developing a comparative religions program? Deal with Islam, deals with Taoism, deal with Buddhism, Shintoism, and things, those kinds of classes, the reality is...
Well, that's in play at the middle school, and it's play, it's in play already.
That's your world religion.
Yeah, so, so, I mean, this is, this is a more specific focus. And again, it's an elective course. So, if students see that and they're not interested in this focus, then, then they wouldn't sign up for it. So, there is that opportunity.
So, are we looking at developing the alternative religions classes as well, then? So, we'd have study of the Quran, study of...
Well, we're saying that's already in play. There already is a course at the high school, that's more, this is more specific about, about the Bible itself.
It was called world religion.
Yeah. Right, so I, you know, this is more of a narrow focus. In the discussions with the English department and Social Studies Department having is to, that they discuss how that will impact enrollment in these classes. And they also agree upon, we should, we should try to run this. Because they have those conversations to say, well, how is this gonna impact enrollment in a world religion class that we already run? So, they've already had those discussions internally in the high school, and they feel like this is an offering, we should go.
Just for Professor McNamara, children enter into a very diverse world. We want to make sure that they understand the diversity of world they're walking into. Most of the world is not Christian, and that should be understood in context.
Right, but there's already a middle school world religions class, which talks about the various religions of the world. There's already a high school world religion class that talks about the various religions of the world. These are, these are classes that have been going on. What he's providing here is a specific class, the Bible as literature, which the majority of our citizens are Christians. And so, it's a choice that they would potentially make.
Yeah, I'm just asking, if they want additional choices, they wanna study the Torah, we offer that as literature as well.
Yeah, potentially.
And etc., 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 as potential topics here.
If the staff were to take it to Steve, I'm sure that would come up.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, I'm, I'm reading this a little bit, and I'm thinking about what some of the, some of the criticisms of this could be. And that will the Bible be taught as a fiction document or nonfiction document? And will, will this be a, an attempt to be revisionist history of the Bible and its teachings? And I could see where it could be perceived that this could be, you know, kind of a slippery slope where, where, you know, public education is delving into the religious arena.
I mean, we're already diving into the world, we're already in the religious arena.
But I think that those are, those are some of the things that, that may come out. And we should just be aware of that.
Yeah, I just like to see a syllabus, and I'd like to know who's teaching it before I would approve that personally.
I think that Mr. Latch provided some of the backup, you know, particularly with the quote that he put in the packet.
But, but we can provide that. I mean, we can provide more detail.
I'd like to know more.
For that, that would...
I mean, it's very specific. It's going from comparing things to one specific thing, and that's quite different.
Right, we can provide that.
I think the part about, you know, I think Mr. Latch is addressing the fact that it's taught in, within the English department here, identifying a specific instructor. Maybe valid the day we provide the information, but if there are any different, number of different things that could transpire, that it could be a different instructor by the time the class is actually offered, so.
Right.
The other thing to consider, too, is, you know, we have a very diverse English department and Social Studies Department, and they've already had an internal discussion about how all this plays out, too. In other words, they, they wanna make sure that students have lots of different options and that they consider all of those things. So, they've, they've had some of those internal discussions, and we want to be able to put some trust in, in the movement that they wanna have as department to offer a wide range of choices for students.
Would it make sense to have them come here and talk to us?
We can do what you would like to see in terms of, if you want more detail, that's, that's the point of this. And we wanna, you know, do that kind of thing before it moves forward, to have those questions answered.
Then given some of the questions that have come up here, maybe we should amend the motion that we'll approve all the courses except for that one. And if you could come back in January, and then we'd look at, does that make sense? I'm just throwing, suggesting that.
Yeah, far better.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Far better.
Someone said, you measure twice and cut once, I think. Someone said that.
Okay, so, so the chair will make a motion to amend the motion that we will approve the new courses with the exception of the Bible course. And that Assistant Superintendent Latch will come back in January and provide us with more detail on that course. And then at that point, we'll take action. Is there, is there a second for that amended motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. Is there any further discussion?
Should we finish up with the rest of the courses now, or do we rest later?
If you would like to, Operation Ahead here, a little bit.
However you'd like to play. Okay. Moving on, English Ten Signs. This is a course, a real next-generation classroom course, where one of our teachers is proposing this notion of students publishing online magazines several times a year, focused on the 21st century learner, connected with the Common Core standards. It would involve technology, which is, there's a price tag to this, but there's a price tag with all of our next-generation type of movement. And this would also use a cutting-edge textbook, Whole New Mind, which is a Daniel Pink series, focused on the learner of today, drive and motivation. There's a number of field trips that are involved in this course. So, it really is around the strategic framework and how we wanna connect. It offers a different type of alternative teaching of English. It should be a great course, expensive, but there's a price tag for that.
Would we be able to subscribe to the magazines?
Yeah, there'll be.
Having very interested in seeing the results.
And then the, another one, right along the lines of the importance of staying in touch with what's happening today. Paul's been talking for years about the need for more computer science classes. We have that now at the high school. Now, we're proposing movement into AP Computer Science. We actually are doing a Computer Science Education Week this week, which is gonna be neat. We have heritage students and middle school students signed up to have some of our community software engineers come and take them through what's known as an hour of code, which is really getting kids interested in computer science. Blake Foster, one of our teachers at high school, has been pushing this, and also is proposing an AP Computer Science class. So, we'd like to run that next year. And then finally, with our...
Did you see recently the article that talked about that in age-specific programming is now being taught at the second grade level?
Yeah, and some of these activities are really, like, they focus on Angry Birds as one of them. So, so they are really geared towards students at a young age being able to be really interested.
So, we're doing it at the level and the rest of the world starting in second grade.
Right, so it's an important topic for certain. The last class is connected with our project, We Do A C Points, which is known as P O E, or Principles of Engineering. And so, it goes middle school connection, then high school introduction to engineering design, and this is the next course in that sequence. So, it's an important class. It's expensive. However, we actually have over forty thousand dollars in foundation money privately donated to support Project Be The Way, so there's no expense for the startup of this class for the district. So, those are the courses that we're proposing at high school level.
Questions?
So, based on all of these courses, what are the likelihood that we'll offer any of these in the fall?
We're gonna offer, offer to students, but if, for example, Spanish culturally, you know, twenty kids sign up or eighteen, then we would make a decision whether we run the class or not.
So, these will all be in our course guide?
If approved, yes.
If approved, yeah.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Yeah, just, just real quick. We get our board packet a week ahead of time or so, right? I would just say that if there's an opportunity, there's something that's a red flag for somebody, they should probably call whoever has issued that and maybe ask those questions so that we can keep the process alive as far as what we did tonight. And it's fine, I'm with it, but let's take that opportunity and communicate, so we don't have to do this.
Okay. So, we have an amended motion on the floor. Is there any other additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One, no?
So, that was for the amendment. Now, what are we doing with the motion?
Well, it was an amended motion to approve the courses with the exception of the Bible course, which will then be brought back and put on the January agenda. That's what we just voted on. Do you wanna reconsider your vote?
No.
Okay.
Alright.
Okay. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the high school reproductive health curriculum adoption as submitted by Assistant Superintendent Latch. So, who? So, Chief? And Karen.
Okay, discussion in this matter. Well, first off, I have Natalie Freeburn and Jennifer Leathers here tonight. And they're, Jennifer filled in for Natalie on her maternity leave in terms of teaching health in the high school. And in a minute, they're gonna touch base a little bit on the importance of the direction of this curriculum. I was gonna talk a little bit about how we came up with the decision to move forward with this and the Reproductive Health Committee in general. So, let's start there. Reproductive Health Committee Advisory Committee has met for the last couple of years, and we've largely been looking at review of the high school curriculum. Previously, reproductive health had been focusing on fourth, fifth, and sixth grade and middle school, and kind of been working our way up to the high school and determining what's happening at the high school level in terms of teaching of sexuality education and HIV in particular. So, the committee is formed with doctors, nurses, community members, students, all sorts of professionals to give a wide range, a clergy member to give a wide perspective on the teaching of reproductive health. So, we thank all of those who are involved in that process. If you look at your packet, which is, we have, looks like this. It looks at the overall health curriculum. And so, the focus at the beginning is, there are seven strands of teaching health, and HIV prevention and sexuality education are the last two strands. So, that's what we're referring to. And we talk about teaching health, it's not just this, it's a breadth of different topics. But this particular focus is on those two strands. And those are strands that are connected around the Michigan merit curriculum. So, if you open that packet, you'll look at a little greater detail into HIV and sexuality education. And that's a brief overview of the standards themselves, and briefly what the teachers have been focused on in terms of some of their resources. If you go to the next packet, where it says student learning objectives, this is part of the Michigan Model for Health, which is this binder. And this is what we're seeking approval tonight. And what is in here, it's an absolutes-based program, and it's been developed by a number of health professionals around the state. It's supported by many organizations. And the idea is that we take what's previously been adopted by the Board of Education in terms of activities that the high school has always been teaching, and give them the freedom to get into greater depth in sexuality education, HIV, by using this binder and the activities that are better inside of it. And so, with that said, if you can refer to this next page, this Michigan Model for Health, reproductive health proposed changes, this is sort of the general overview of... Reproductive Health Proposed Changes, this is sort of the general overview of what we're talking about here. And Natalie and Jennifer are going to take a few minutes to walk us through this document. And if you guys will, I didn't start, we can go from there. Great. Thanks for being here, by the way.
Good evening. So Jennifer came here to, because it's my third week back since being on maternity leave, and we've just started this, this curriculum, this, this year. So the reproductive health portion, as you can, did you get a chance to copy the handout that I gave you?
This right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, they all have it.
So this has, basically comparing contrast of what we've had approved or have approved currently versus what, what is the changes. The changes, this really are not curriculum-wise and topic-wise, are all the exact same. What this curriculum allows us to do is spend more time on reproductive health, whereas before, we only had about five days left, six days on a good trimester of getting through all the content to cover a lot of those heavy topics. And second trimester especially, because for some reason in the past, it is a little shorter to begin with, and when you add in a couple of snow days here or there, it, it really crunches on time. And so these are topics that you really want kids to talk about with people who have knowledge about this, and parents are out there, they talk about it with their, with their kids, but not all parents. Talk about it. I know that at my home, my mom had us three girls to talk to, and my dad, my dad had my brother, and my mom did a great job talking to those girls, and my dad was like, "Oh, yeah, Ryan, um, um..." So it depends on the, the home structure. Some people are really open about it. I know Jennifer is, I was blessed to have her as my sub, because she was same passionate as about me with health, and you got to be open with your family and talk to your kids. And I've had her daughter before, and I know that a lot of parents are very open, but this needs to be talked about in a factual basis, so that kids can get the information that they need to make wise choices. And the new curriculum really allows for much more discussion time. It allows us to spend two and a half to three weeks on the curriculum, on this unit, versus five days. So that's the biggest adjustment there. The topics are the same. The activities actually are the same, because we had the same activity, Mary Bino, who is, what's her title at the state again?
She's for Public Health, Livingston County and Washington County. She helps with all of that.
She's like the reproductive health guru for activities for, and we've used her activities in the past. Those are already, the, the ones that have been approved already, and they're in this curriculum. So again, if we're not changing a lot of what we're doing, we're just spending more time on discussion. It's giving the kids a little bit more time for research, getting, putting, this whole curriculum is very student-driven, student-based. We will lead you in the right direction, and you're going to come up with these answers. "Oh, look at, look what you found." Same thing I would have lectured to you on if I had to, you know, preach to you kids. So it's just much more, they get the aha moments, instead of us saying, "Don't do this, don't do that." They're the ones who find the data and figure it out, and then say, "Oh, yeah, this was really not the smartest choice to be sexually active," or to, or if I put myself in this situation, it might put myself at risk to be sexually active. So it's helping them to come up with those aha moments. That's about, that's the biggest change, really.
Right, we, one of our, one of the things we really did look at is greater depth, like Natalie was talking about. The issues are that we need to get more into depth, and there's a gap sometimes coming out of middle school. The way our curriculum sets up, it's actually more focused in fourth, fifth, and sixth grade, and then seventh and eighth is, is some HIV. But then, you know, the kids are really getting it again, mainly ninth grade, and that it's really important that we get greater depth. We talked about, we brainstorm ways to get more discussion and depth outside of the high school curriculum. But one of the things we run into is it's supposed to be taught by an approved instructor. You know, if we were to organize social forums about trying to teach this, it would be dicey with approval from parents. And so we're pleased that we go from five to seven days to two to three weeks, which is, which is great. So I applaud the health teachers for really looking at this and trying to figure out a way to get more instruction.
It would be ideal if we could bring health back to the middle school. Ideal.
Right.
And I, just because there is such a gap, like I, like Steve said, there's between the fourth and fifth grade, and then they come into high school, and I know in parenting class, which is an elective class, they have to label the parts, and it's amazing how many kids don't know the proper name of their own parts, and we're teaching parenting class. And it's not covered in, in our health curriculum either. It's supposed to have been covered, I think in seventh, eighth grade somewhere, but then-
It's a bit earlier.
It's even earlier. So you can imagine the recollection of what they can recall from sixth grade to high school, when all of a sudden, these parts matter to them. And they're changing all the time. So it's for, I think it would be ideal to even just consider down the road, even planting the seed right now, thinking about bringing it back to the middle school, because it really, kids are really devalued earlier and earlier. They're making these choices earlier and earlier. They're building relationships, whether they're healthy relationships with their friends, their peers, or even romantic relationships even earlier these days. So something to consider.
Okay. Thanks.
Any questions for board members?
On the topic of middle school versus high school, what's the pattern across the state? What is introduced, and what, what percentage of schools have it, middle school?
I can't, I mean, all of them touch base in middle school, but some of them, as Natalie said, have a dedicated health instructor and make it part of a rotation. We used to have something like that, but haven't for a while, so right now, it's taught within the science curriculum. It's just that, you know, there is this gap in that it's not, there's not a lot of depth in the middle school curriculum.
I'd ask majority, or in part of your freshman, freshman health is kind of-
Are you with majority practice, or are you with a minority position?
Yeah, I mean, a lot of people have reduced health at the middle school. It's not that there's tons of health, it's just that it used to be offered.
Good point about the, kind of, the relative age of students.
If a parent wanted to opt out of this for their children-
Always. Yeah, they're always.
That is a standard.
It's a state mandate, actually, that you-
Yeah.
Yeah. We send home a, a letter on the first day of class, and it's typically the topics that are listed on the first portion of the page, along with an explanation of what we go over. We strongly encourage that, that students go home and talk to their parents. And actually, one of the great things about this unit is that there is a lot of communication home with the kids. Here's, that they can see on their first bullet point, identify their attitudes, influences, responsibilities, their values, where they, about themselves and how they view sexuality. And then they get points for going home and having discussion with their parents on this. And it's a great door opener for the parents who don't know how to bring it up, but the kids who want the points for that, so.
So there's a parental sign-off required?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely, yes.
And there is other levels as well, in terms of they're aware that this is going on, and there, I mean, some parents do choose to opt out of some parts of it, which is fine. The, the strength of this program, as Natalie just said, the younger ages, there are a lot of interactive activities that sort of force the issue for parents to start having those conversations with students, which is where we really want most of that to take place.
Absolutely.
Can I ask another question about health reproductive, but strand two is alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs? How long is that part of the?
How long do you spend on that one?
With the new program, it took a week.
A week?
And Mark Schubi comes in and speaks one day also.
Okay. Because I know we've had discussions, our survey came up with some rather little scores, and this had some high-profile overdoses in town lately, so, and we've always kind of talked about from there to high school, there is a little bit of a gap there, so.
Well, having Mr. Schubi back has actually been, it's, it's been good for the program and for the kids too. There, there was a time there where he was moved out of the building and we couldn't fit him into the program. He used to come in for four or five days. It was actually about four days. And he was really, it was, to have that resource in the school, to have the kids meet who he is, because he is our sad coordinator, he is a student assistance coordinator, so he is the go-to guy for that outside of health class. And so for us, instead of just saying, "Oh, yes, go see Mr. Schubi, if he's got problems with this or that." Well, who's Mr. Schubi then? By bringing him into the classroom, they already know who he is, they've heard his story, and they've heard, you know, they, he's really great at building instant rapport with kids. He can get, he can hook them in real quick, so having him come in for at least one day is, is great.
Okay, thank you.
What I've realized though, too, is through the program, you delve into all of the aspects of health, and the kids are continually presenting to each other. They research, they present, and so through the advocacy part, you may choose to advocate having no smoking, you know, at home, or if your grandparents smokes or something, how can you be an advocate for someone and then introduce that? So these are the steps you take. Or, I mean, it could be healthy relationships, could be eating, you know, eating choices healthy, anything like that. So it's a great program, because in the beginning, the first three weeks, you spend solely on decision-making and goal-setting. They follow specific steps. How do I get what I want effectively? What resources do I have? And then from that, they apply that to every other aspect. So when we get to the nutrition unit, you may choose to do healthy eating. You may choose to do, how do I keep my body healthy even though I'm not an athlete? And then they have those seven steps that they follow, they set their goal, they make the decision, how do they get what they want, and then they present it to each other.
It's very skills-based.
So very.
The whole first, like you said, first three weeks are learning these skills, and then throughout the rest of the trimester, they're applying them to those different topics.
Through multimedia, they do PowerPoints. I had them set up a school board, and they had to advocate for something in the school that they would like to see changed. And then the board set up and voted yes or no. Was it good, you know, were your decisions good? Did you have a good argument? Things like that. Who's it going to benefit? It's very effective. They do game shows, they do newscasts, they do all kinds of creative things to get the word out to each other, which is essentially, they listen to each other as much or more.
Right.
So, yeah, it's a great, it was a great program.
Any other comments or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good candidate for the minister position.
Yeah. We have, we have no discussion items this evening. The chair will entertain a motion to authorize items A through C as part of the consent agenda. Do we have a motion? I'll move Trustee Zimmer, Gordon, and Vice President Hatt. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next meeting agenda, which would be, is it January 10th? January 14th? January 14th. We will have our organizational meeting, where we will elect the board officers for 2014, and then, we're going to have the Fall Recognition Night-
Yep.
-where we will recognize students and groups, not only sports teams, but other groups that had success during the fall. We will bring them in and recognize them on that evening. Excuse your framework update. Okay? This is the second opportunity for public comment. Is there anybody who wishes to address the board for up to three minutes? The chair will entertain a motion to enter into closed session.
Tom.